Good evening, everyone. We welcome you to our meeting this evening. Appreciate you being here and we have a form present and we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Kenny County President and District Board of Directors to order. The time is 5:00 PM latest January 14th, 2025 and we are in the appraisal district office, 412 Anne Street Bracketville. We do have a form present, so we will continue on and call our meeting to order. And the first item is the oath of office administered by the chief appraiser to Guillermo Guzman, Marla Madrid if she's here, and Herb City. So we have two that are ready.
Guillermo's with her.
How you been? Sonder. And I didn't.
You're gonna read it out?
No.
I was asking my mom.
Yeah, her mom. I think she dislocated the hip. She called it. Said she might be here. So.
Should I just write your birthday? When I leave here?
I recall that she had hips hurt. So that makes it double bad.
I'm still writing 24.
Yeah. Took a fall at home.
Excellent. I love the word.
I've done that before.
What happened to my aunt? Takes me up a little bit. June and then September.
Oh. Don't want that.
Wow. Much mess to do, so.
Yeah, I made 24.
We're getting new forms.
We'll have those in a moment. Turned out to be a beautiful day today. Chills most of the day.
I thought it was going to be like seven before.
I don't think so.
But next week.
Yeah. Over the weekend.
I think starting Friday, I mean Sunday. I mean, she's told when I went up to sleep, I feel. Next week is gonna be great.
Yes, it is.
It's gonna be cold. I think so. We had a meeting today to kind of what's gonna be our weather plan.
Do y'all have school on Monday?
We do not. But I think the call for him could send. I was at Sunday again. I thought it was Monday and I entered Tuesday in the morning.
Well, I had told my mom there's a couple of boys who've been working for John Paul. I said I can bring them over to work in your yard, but I saw that the wind chill was gonna be like in the twenties. We're gonna come work in your yard. You're like 25 degrees. And she was like, no. But I said today the leaves need to be ready to be everything, you know, her like her bowl of daisies had died, you know, we need to cut back. I thought I'd take them over there to work. It's gonna be wind chills in the twenties. We'll have to wait till another day.
Yeah, I think Tuesday's the coldest day, but it's showing right now. Maybe we'll get cold. Tuesday will be cold. High only 36.
Gotta feed the cows.
Yes.
You everybody having a good holiday?
Yeah.
It's too fast.
You ain't too much weight? I went to the doctor yesterday. That's what she told me.
Yeah.
Going out through the holidays doesn't count.
That's okay. I just switched doctors and I don't want to release them.
Good plan.
Thank you. Here's the old one. So for those of you that are swearing, being sworn in, just repeat after me in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name by the authority of the state of Texas.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of director of the Kenny County Appraisal District.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of director of the Kenny County Appraisal District.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of director of the Kenny County Appraisal District.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
I'll do the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
And will do the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and this state, so help me God.
Just give us your signature there and your date. You have to sign the.
Your date.
Uh.
Yes, sir.
That's my signature and then.
He signs it, but I authorize it. We decide.
That's the other one. Yeah.
She just signed right there. Wish I had a hug.
Yes.
You guys mind? Yes, well. Thank you.
Okay, have we completed everything for the?
No, he needs to sign the confidentiality.
Oh, okay.
I read it and I would prefer to discuss in the executive session unless we talk about it now. I don't think there's applicable to me. I feel very confident on applicable. I mean, I can explain myself, but I don't know if you wanna do the opponent and pray.
I honestly don't think there's anything to discuss. It is either you sign it or you don't and then we will deal with it appropriately.
All right. Can I make a statement? Sure. First of all, I wasn't expecting this, number one. But number two, if, first of all, I don't have, the district doesn't have an attorney to give an opinion on this, number one. So I would like an opinion on that first. Second, if I'm in conflict, anybody who's a member of Fort Clark is in conflict because I represent the board. By the mere fact that we are members of Fort Clark Springs is not escaped from participating. Now, I can refuse myself of Fort Clark Springs regarding these matters, but not here because in my humble opinion, it would be, there's no objectivity as, as I as a member, you know, a member, you're a member, and Marla's a member. Because are we all gonna benefit if, isn't the entire board gonna benefit if it occur, if it happens, if it's successful or not?
But the issue is that the Fort Clark Board has sued this office and he is a board member of the fort and therefore it is a conflict for him to discuss anything that we might have to discuss.
Pretending to.
Pretending to the lawsuit.
Well, that's my position and I would like at least the legal opinion from the president, Mr. Pinalita. I would like to.
We already sought the opinion that our.
But I haven't been able to tell my.
Well, I don't, I don't, well, that's not for me to say. The issue is there is a lawsuit that he represents against the appraisal district. And any matter of what that we would discuss about that lawsuit, he would have to recuse himself because of the conflict. That's the simple fact.
The members have a lawsuit.
No, it's the board of directors representing.
The board of director and their representative members. Well, so if it's successful, mister board, you benefit, anybody who's a member benefits, if it's successful, and it might be successful.
That's the kind of stuff we can't discuss because it's already for the lawyers. And, and once we get into talking about value, then not only is it compromising his position as a board member on the fort, it's also compromising his position as a board member on this board because this board can't talk about appraisal issues in this manner. So there's multiple issues there.
At the minimum, I think that should, I should hear the attorney. Or there should be a written opinion.
If he chooses not to sign it today, you know, with respect to the fact that he wants to seek legal advice.
No, no, no.
There's no way we can force him to sign.
The appraisal district attorney.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, for a minute.
So anything else, we'll just dispense with this and move on. And we'll take up the next item, which is selection of the board officers. And anybody that'd like to take my place? Any of you all that?
Oh, yeah.
Officers presently or myself as chairman. I believe Herb, your vice chair. And then Donna?
No, David was a secretary.
Okay, David was secretary. Okay.
David was secretary.
And that was the three. Okay. So what is your pleasure concerning the selection of board officers?
I'd like to present an option and proposal for all three to be elected the same way in the same motion and I would move that you continue to be our chairman, myself. I can't nominate myself, but I would consider it and I would nominate Donna as secretary. So since I'm making the motion, I don't think it's appropriate for me to nominate myself. That's all I have to say at this point.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the list of officers that we have presently to continue to serve, any discussion on that motion? There be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries without opposition.
Does that mean I'm still off term?
You are. You're in charge of vice.
Thank you.
Go ahead, give it away.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. There's nothing to raise on it.
Item number four is the approval of the December 10th, 2024 public meeting minutes.
Would it be appropriate that I abstain since I wasn't part of the minutes, part of the meeting last month?
Yeah. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the December 10th, 2024 public meeting? If there be none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as written and as presented to this board.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, 2024? If there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we got one that abstains. All right, item number five, receipt of any public comment. Again, welcome. Glad you're here this evening, members of the public, and we have any public comments?
I'd like a comment. This is Director Mr. Guzman.
Yes, sir.
I'm just personally curious of what your vision is being on the board and what, how you look forward to forego, continuing with that vision?
My vision on the board is to be supportive of this board and hopefully we have helped to the taxpayers of Kenny County. My service on this board.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment? Wish you would come in. Okay, if there be none, we'll move to the next item, which is our county activity report.
Now, hold on, going on this time of year. You have on your sheet there before you budget recap year to date, we're at 24.1% of the budget, which is right on the money since we're a quarter of the way in. Collections for the tax year 2024 is at 68.32%, which is up 5% from the same timeframe from last year. The appraisal period or the reappraisal is moving along as in the reappraisal plan. Preliminary work has been done with Derek Walker on the audit. Just one little note there, there's, there's some extra work being done at the office. There's, there's a little bit of something that's off for the first time in history here and we think it has to do with the credit cards, the way to process online. So they're getting that worked out, but Eric's already gotten copies, working copies of the quick books. So then in March, for March, we'll leave on the 16th of March and we won't return until the 19th. The office will be closed. We will be going to Frisco, Texas for our Harris Governor, government trainings conference. It's an opportunity that we get to work with our service providers, the ones that provide all the software that we use. And not only that, but we get continuing education hours or credits for those that are working towards their certification in attending the classes there. It gives us an opportunity to, to talk to the people that work on the backside of the software and get some of our answers to questions that we have and stuff like that. So the whole office, all of us will be in attendance at that conference this year. And it generally happens one and a half or every two years. So it's not something that we do on a regular basis. We've gotten an offer and it has been received and forwarded to the tax entities for the CAD trust properties on Fort Clark Springs. There's 130 and change of those properties that have been sent to the tax entities and some of the, some of the entities have already voted on it. There's some pending on those properties. And then right now, I'm currently working with Chad Potts to get new internet and phone services in because AT&amp;T is just way too expensive. We're, we're paying around a thousand dollars a month for phones and internet, which is odd. And it's, the internet service just keeps getting worse all the time. And so anything we can say will be of benefit. And every year we get a small business discount with AT&amp;T, but if you don't call in February to get it renewed, they jump us and we end up paying like $1,700 for the phone bill. And then you've gotta work with them for two months to try to get it back and they credit us. It's just amazing. But I'm, I'm already getting quotes on some of the equipment that will be needed here and the quota on the service is much better than what we currently have.
I don't know if it's like the capability, you know, for what I need, but I have Starlink and I have not had any problems with it.
That's what, the, what will be provided is that we're going to maintain a, an actual physical line and then Starlink will be a backup. So we will actually have two constant services. So that if the LAN line goes down, then we will jump over on Starlink. And what will probably happen in the setup, talking to Chad today, is that the Starlink will come in first and we'll be running off a bit while the other service gets installed. So, and I've been in contact with a provider for a new firewall, same brand that we've got through Harris Government. I'm gonna be buying this one directly and Chad's gonna be setting that up for us.
Do you have, don't you qualify for spectrum that's already here in town? That'd be an option.
Chad is a dealer for spectrum and he's the one that's.
Is it, does this offer need to hit three bids like all the other county offices?
You know, I think it would depend on the amount of money that's gonna be committed to it and we're gonna be spending, I think they're talking about changing that bid limit, but I think it's 50,000. Certainly wouldn't be hard to get votes, but it's certainly gonna be under 50,000.
No, we're, we're, we're talking, hopefully we're gonna be coming in around 500 a month for our bill and, and there's not a big switcheroo fee at this moment. So. But no, generally in these kind of things, that's what I've been authorized to do. So other than that, we're just doing the day to day, giving rent visits when they come up. This year we did send out, or are sending out PAG applications to everyone. So y'all should be getting some bright orange paper in your mailboxes along with everyone else.
Okay. Do you have any question or comment on our appraisal district activity report? Okay, if there be none, we'll go to item number seven, which is discussion approval, Coleman and Horton CPA's contract for audit year ending September 30th, 2024.
And you have a copy of that in your packet. There was an increase of about $500 from last year to this year for his services, for their services. Derek, Derek's an excellent person to do our, Coleman and Horton is an excellent service for us.
We've been using these folks a long time, haven't we?
Yep, longer than I've been here. So.
They're awful good people. Little priest like that you'd expect.
Yes.
Chairman, I move that we approve the contract for audit, that's what the audit term year ending for the year ending September 30th, 2024 and that that firm be Coleman and Horton CPA.
Okay, we have a motion made to approve Coleman and Horton CPA's contract for their auditing service with fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve Coleman and Horton? Okay, if there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Item number eight, appointment of the ARB members presently serving, Linda O'Brien, Cordelia Mendike, Brad Whitaker, and Wanda Salbi. We have one with us this evening. And these also individuals have to get training and be certified to serve.
Every year.
Yeah. Not an easy job.
No.
Might add that.
No. Not a fun one.
No.
I wasn't one.
Yeah.
My question regarding that is, is that open up any for people to nominate themselves to become that or they just call, call by phone and come to it?
Have, have we had any others expressing interest in certain?
No.
It's been kind of difficult to get people because it's controversial, you know, and so they don't really.
I guess I should have narrowed my question. Is there, is there an open period where there's a call for volunteers?
We seek out new people when we have the need for them. Right now we have four members. All we're required here is three. And so basically we have three functioning and one alternate in case one of the individuals is not able to be here. So we're covered on, on that timeframe.
Kind of, I guess you'd say entities represented would have, if I'm correct, which is important as well, consideration. We've got, I guess, Linda O'Brien and Wanda up in fourth and then we've got Brad Whitaker is at Spofford and then Cordelia Mendike is in Bracketville. And in the past, we've tried to, to use that criteria to an extent where you have representation. And so the complement of that ARB board right now does represent that. But yeah, it has been difficult in the past to get folks committed to that.
But per se, we don't have a general timeframe. It's usually as needed to serve is when we seek them out, when we lose one.
Personal opinion, it's not broke. Let's don't try to fix the damn thing. It didn't work that good and let it alone. It's working.
So you need a motion for that?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the members as presented to the board.
Second, we have a motion made and seconded to appoint the ARB members as listed, Linda O'Brien, Cordelia Mendike, Brad Whitaker, and Wanda Salbi. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the ARB members? If there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Item number nine, appointment of the ARB chairperson, Linda O'Brien.
Move to appoint Linda O'Brien as chairman.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to appoint the ARB chairperson will pass Linda O'Brien. Any discussion on the motion? If there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same side, and motion carries. Item number 10, discussion, first presentation of the proposed 2025, 2026 preliminary budget. And you have a copy of those and that particular budget in your packet.
You don't have a copy of that?
Yes.
I don't think we see.
So I don't know how, I'll give you all the time to look over it, but if you wanna go to the back page, yeah.
Yes, you can find it. There it is. She's got it.
I'm sorry, the next to the last page.
Page five.
Next, the four signatures?
Oh, yeah, this one, page five.
Okay.
That's the one that gives you the grand total. From the payroll and then the, the biggest change this year will be payroll. The main difference is that for the 25, 26 budget year, I'm wanting to move our part time to a full-time position. She's been here.
Two years.
Two years and she's working out well. She's gone to several classes, passed all her classes without any issues. She is a definite help. So if you look up at the top of the page, there, line eight gets zeroed out and a difference of 25,000 to the good. And then line nine, it's an added 36,000. And so that's what the difference is, $11,000 moving her from, that's her cell. Uh, and so that's what the difference is, eleven thousand dollars moving her from, that's her salary, but then all the benefits due to additional increase. And so that's, that's what the bu- bulk of total budget increase is generated from, and therefore it generates a seven point three, six percent overall increase to our budget. And you can look through the different pages of this. Uh, again, this isn't anything that we have to prove, this is just for discussion this meeting. This is our first presentation. Uh, at our next meeting is when we will have to have the preliminary uh done due soon. And again, all of this is driven because of the school and their fiscal year. If if it wasn't for the school, we we would be doing this in June. But because it's their fiscal years is on a different calendar than everyone else, we have to have it seven months.
Three months.
Yeah.
So, and so that causes all of this.
We have to have it to them by March.
Activated early.
And so we're a quarter of the way into our current budget and we're already working on the next one, which is kind of like spitting in the wind, as I've said before, because we have no clue about what benefits, uh, insurance mainly, what is going to be at that time. This year, we had to make a big adjustment because what we budgeted for, uh, it turned out to be more than what we'd budgeted, so. Uh, but there it is for your consideration, and it will, we'll have to vote on it and work on it for the March meeting. So look at it if you'd like and.
Yeah, you got any questions, you know, we'll work those out and discuss those. The uh, just for everyone's benefit, uh, in addition to what we we said, that uh the budget process has been uh moved up three months from where it used to be. And uh, no fault in that at all, it's just that the way that it is, uh, it seems early when you're in January talking about the budget, but it, the process is what has to be started because uh we then, after we vote on it, then it goes to the entities. So there's time that's involved in getting it processed. And uh, and so uh just a little explanation, I think it's helpful for everyone to know uh the timeframe and why. Uh, so are there, at this point, any questions?
I I just have a couple of questions. You said there was a seven point three eight percent increase, seven point three?
Overall.
Okay, I'm just confused by the eight point seven three here and the thirteen ninety two here. I just need to clarify.
If you look on page one, which is this one, it'll give you the the overall increase of the seven six.
Oh, it's seven six eight.
Uh, total is seven six three.
Six three, not six eight.
That is uh for the assessment side, but the overall is seven point six three.
Because we get some income.
Yeah, we get income from.
From tax certificates.
Data request.
Data requests and stuff like that, so that income is subtracted out of the total, so it's only seven point.
And and it's seven percent because one person go in on part-time and full-time, correct? I mean, that's what.
What we had worked on, what we had worked on originally was going to be two point.
Yeah, it was only going to be two if we had.
Some percent, but my issue is Laurie's been here long enough on a part-time position. She has shown her ability to uh acquire the knowledge required.
Very pretty cool.
She is fitting in well, and uh she's wanting to sit around, so. Uh, my actual hope is maybe in June, with excess from our current budget, I can bring it on in June instead of have to wait till a new budget for point five, point six, which would be October. But we're budgeting for it with the notion that it will be definite, so.
Mr. Ward, the the budget takes, if it's approved at the next meeting, it takes effect October first or when?
Yes, it'll be March at our next board meeting.
That we would approve the budget and then the increase, the seven point six three goes into effect when?
With the new fiscal year.
October first. Okay, so it's just done, yeah, six months and a half.
And and it is confusing because we talked about the schools, fiscal year and our fiscal year. And then actually, the counties is number one, and the city, and I guess the water district, so.
Yeah, the water, mud is uh uh January one.
Yes.
So they're all.
It does get a little.
And all this is in case there's a disapproval of something that we have time to do.
Well, the entities can't stop the increase, but you just advise the entities, correct?
We advise they can disapprove, and then we have to present a new budget. The board at that time has thirty days to present a new budget.
This this approval is only to give it to the entities so they can put it into their budgets, so that they have the knowledge of it. Then we have a a hearing, which is in May.
Right.
That's good. Yeah, the good part about it all is if we acquire more money than what we need through taxation, we get it right back, any excess. It don't go into a hopper over here, but put an AC in or buy a new pickup or new car or a new salary. It's given back to the actual, so the the whole process is really hard for a guy like me to get to handle on because there's so many deviations that occur throughout. I rely on these folks around me that are our staff to keep us on track and functioning just as cheaply as we possibly can, but as effectively as we can in serving the public. Oh, boy, hell, yeah, my vice president, that's my, no, taking all the fun out of it for the. But what I'm trying to say is, in in a nutshell, that small an increase overall uh is plenty good for something, and I will vote that way in March. Okay?
Okay, just, and just to give you an idea of why this has come about, some of this has come about because Mr. Guzman is on the board. Uh, one time he came in to this office and approached two of the staff members and stated that everyone in this office should be fired and gotten rid of. And so we've been working, walking on pins and needles around here for quite a while. But the issue is, this is the job that we have, and this is the job that we got to do. And at this point, it needs to happen. And so Laurie, at this point, has shown to be an asset. And so uh I'm not going to be walking on pins and needles about someone threatening my job. And so this is what the budget is, and that's where everyone's consideration, and so.
For the directors, what you just said is false. And I'm going to do that then. I mean, I can expand on it later, but it's not correct. And I'm not even sure why it's being brought up right now. I'm not arguing with the module. That's my clarification, and I regret that you're walking on pins and needles, Mr. Tate. But I'm not, I'm not doing anything to you.
No, but it's it's well known in the community that, and from my staff directly, on two occasions, when I was absent, you came in and belittled every one of my staff members.
That is not correct either, and I can correct it, I can correct it.
So you're calling my staff?
No, I'm saying what you're saying, what you're stating, sir, is incorrect.
Okay, why don't we uh move on? Oh, and uh there is no more discussion, we're on the item concerning the proposed budget. And so is there any other discussion on that particular item? If not, we'll proceed to item number eleven, which is discussion and approval of the quarterly modified bill report. And uh, you've got a copy of that.
Yeah.
And uh, it's.
That's the one that got me recorded for the adjustments.
No, it's just.
One, it's got all kinds of numbers scattered around.
Yeah, where you cut a bunch of lines that everyone didn't sign.
Yeah, it's basically saying you can't predict everything. If you wish, you could, but you can keep up with it.
There is a minus of fourteen hundred and seven dollars due to some, generally, as I told you before, it's generally due to a homestead exemption or a military exemption, a DVE or something like that that comes into play on homestead or like filed or when that someone didn't know they were entitled to, so they come back at a later date.
I would move to approve the modified bill report and present, we have a motion to approve the modified bill report.
I'll second it.
We have a second, any discussion on the motion to approve the modified bill report? If there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, and the motion carries without opposition.
Mr. Ward, have we signed one copy or have we signed one?
We've got everyone signing the same copy.
Yeah. We'll rotate this one around, it requires everyone's signature, and everyone's name is is on that.
Tim, I need the uh Coleman and Horton.
Oh, great.
I guess you have assigned that part.
All right. Our next item is uh this, this group chief appraisal evaluation, and that also will be returned in March. And uh, of course, each one of you have a copy of that.
Yep.
Okay, um, you're welcome, of course, take these home and uh score the evaluation how you feel led to, and then bring them back uh in March. And uh, we do this annually, and uh.
You do that as a board? I'm just basing it on this, we handled it all to the previous.
Take one and pass it around, that's the one that you all need to allow and mail into Coleman and Horton. Keep an envelope, because that's a prepaid.
Let's just run off the back page. I stole some of them, probably more of it. Those, he's picked it up to you. He's fallen off that back page.
Oh. Any question or comment about the evaluation?
Just review it and we'll discuss it next week?
In next quarter.
In March.
March. Yes.
You can fill yours out if you want.
We do, I fill mine out between now and then, and I'll just give it to him and he summarize everybody's.
In fairness to Mr. Tate, I've only been here one meeting.
I'm sorry.
I've only been here for one meeting, so.
Hey, give it a shot.
Give it a shot.
Yeah, take one there.
Yeah, I gave you a judge one here.
And then that one you too.
Yeah.
Yes, we, um.
You fill out and mail it back to Coleman and Horton.
Oh, the mail out to the school?
Yes.
Okay. We fill it out now or?
No, I mean.
You don't have to.
In Malaysia?
You can fill it out whenever you want to.
So you stand?
Yes.
And what that's, again, for the public, uh, there is a questionnaire for board members uh to uh basically, it's a financial uh questionnaire to make sure that none of us have any type of conflict in respect to our our service here, and it's annual. This isn't something new, it's it's annual that the Coleman and Horton receive themselves. And uh, I know we have to do one for the county and the city, and so it's it's pretty well standard. So any questions come there, though? I think as you read it, it'll make sense.
Yes.
You need to put this up on wireless.
Oh, let's see here.
Make sure that, I think if I'm looking at the agenda correctly, we are at number thirteen, lucky thirteen, which is to adjourn. Unless we want to hang around.
Are you?
Fire, come on, fire. Marler's not here, we can adjourn. And I I suppose she'll be sworn in next week.
Yes, she has. We would adjourn. We would do that at the next meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a second, any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Very well, but if there be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and motion carries without opposition, and we are adjourned at five forty-five PM. Thank you very much, and again, thank you all for being here today, being in attendance, all the public.